2015 preliminary budget for general, highway, library and special districts. That's our public hearing for tonight. The legal notice was published in the Penfield Post on September 18th, 2014. Posted on the town's website and the town clerk bulletin board. No postcards were mailed due to this being a town-wide action.
Thank you, Amy. And Mr. Horowitz, is this properly before the board?
Yes, it is.
All right. Now, without further ado, Mr. Beeden.
Thank you.
We'll push the button and you can start.
What we'll talk about this evening is our 2015 preliminary budget for the general fund, highway and library funds. Then we'll talk about our 2015 special district preliminary budgets. When we take a look at the assessed valuation for 2015, the assessment growth was 3.2 percent. With that and the reduction of our expenses and also additional revenues that we had during the year would allow us to be able to maintain the same tax rate that we've had for the last six years at $2.64. However, when we take a look at a three-year budget process, we can only estimate the best to our ability. And this is just an estimate at this point. There's not a lot of detail except for what we know at this point. We anticipated an assessment growth of about 1 percent. And in 2017, an assessment growth of 1 percent due to new construction. But we won't know exactly what that will be until we meet with the board a year from now, when we do the 2016 budget. As you can see, this tax rate chart shows our tax rate at $2.64 in 2015. And it's been that way for the last six years. But when we take a look at 2008, that rate was $2.94. And in 2009, it was $2.94. So the town has been able to reduce that and still maintain the same services over the years. I'd like to compare this with all the other tax jurisdictions in Penfield. If you live in the Penfield Central School District and you have a house that's assessed at $160,000, you'll pay $5,814. Out of that, 70.1 percent of that tax is the Penfield Central School tax. Monroe County is 22.6. And the town is 7.3 percent. If you live in the Webster Central School District, you pay $5,153.06 if your house is assessed at $160,000. And you'll pay your Webster School tax at 65.7 percent of that total. 25.9 percent for Monroe County. And the town at 8.4 percent. When we take a look at the major revenue sources in the town, we'd like to take a look at the sales tax because we work with the county of Monroe that gives us an estimate based on what they feel the increases will be or the decreases in sales tax over the next three years. So we take this figure and then we work with the town board on this and they come up with a conservative estimate because really, we don't know what the economic conditions are going to be for the next three years. But this is a good calculation for us to use. It's a meter that we can use to try to come up with what the revenue sources will be. Also, we have bond payments that affect our tax rate for 2015. It's our principal and interest payments for our pool, locker room, library project. That expires in the year 2019. Then we also have the land acquisition project which expires in the year 2022. So when we pay off the principal each year, the interest gets less. So as you can see, in 2015, it's reduced from 2014 of about $32,000 and gets reduced further in 2016 and 2017. And finally, by the end of 2022, there will be no bond payments. As we get into talking about our 2015 preliminary budget for the general, highway and library funds, our total appropriations are $278,977 below the total appropriations in 2014. Our personnel salaries are down $137,555. That's due to the fact employers that are retiring, we are not filling those positions. And those positions we're filling, we're filling at less pay. Contractual costs is down. Department heads have reduced costs. However, they still are able to maintain the same services, about $283,540 from 2014's budget. Employee benefits are down $106,513. As employees retire, that's the less benefits that the town has to pay. Our capital outlay parks and projects are down $150,000. And of course, I talked about our debt service in one of the slides. And that's a reduction of $32,000. We do have some major increased costs, though. And that's basically vehicle replacement costs for the highway department. As you can see here, it's up $306,924 from the 2014 budget. And we also have some capital outlay projects for road repair work for 2015. That's up $122,600. Insurance, general liability insurance will go up about 8 percent for 2015. Our contingency account is up about $24,000. You take a look at our revenue for our 2015 preliminary budget. Our real property tax increase assessment growth is 3.18 percent, netted us $242,900 due to new construction in Penfield. Our sales tax, based on the figures that we got from Monroe County, we decided to use $2,800,000 for our sales tax projections for 2015. That's up $100,000. Our state aid is up about $21,776. And that's due to the increase in aid that we got for the consolidated highway improvement program. Interfund revenues are up slightly. Again, you'll notice appropriate equipment reserves. That's up $156,000. And that's the fund that we're using from the highway reserve fund for them to be able to purchase the needed vehicle equipment needs for 2015. So the balance, the budget for 2015, we appropriated from fund balance $209,581, which is a reduction of about $245,000 from the 2014 budget. Take a look at our P.I.S. schedule. Personnel salaries plus benefits where these are the appropriations areas is down from 66 percent in 2014. Equipment and capital projects mainly for the highway equipment needs are up from 4 percent in 2014 to 7 percent in 2015. Contractual costs is down from 24 percent in 2014 to 23 percent in 2015. Town insurance remains pretty much the same as it was in 2014 at 1 percent of budget. And our debt service went down from 6 percent in 2014 to 5 percent in 2015. On the revenue end, where the budget comes from, real property tax represents 48 percent. And that's down from 52 percent in 2014. Our sales tax picked up from 16 percent in 2014 to 18 percent in 2015. Interfund revenues remain the same at 4 percent. Our state aid went down from 9 percent to 8 percent. Other government services remain the same at 7 percent. Local revenues represents 12 percent of our revenues. That's up from 8 percent in 2014. And appropriated surplus and appropriated reserves were the same that they were in We get into the estimated appropriation of revenues. Each year, the town board likes to have a three-year budget. This allows us to take a look at whatever financial problems we may be facing for the next three years and so we can address those figures in order for us to maintain the same services to offer to the residents of Penfield in order to maintain the same tax rate. As you can see, 2016, total appropriations up about $80,000 to $16,82,000. In 2017, it's up $60,000 to $16,144,000. Take a look at salaries, pretty much consistent with a consumer price index and a step increases. Employee benefits, with the mandates that we get from the state for the retirement program, costs, the medical insurance costs and the workers' comp costs, pretty much levels at around $3,800 by the year 2017. Again, the fleet inventory for the highway department is going to need new equipment in the future and they're represented in these figures. Contractual costs pretty much levels off at about $3,700,000 for two years, these two years. Again, our insurance, pretty much when we renew it, will probably be approximately $151,300 for each of these two years. Again, our debt services, we pay off more of the principal, our interest is less and so it'll be reduced. When we take a look at revenues, we show an increase in assessment growth of 1 percent each year so that it allows us to have additional revenues in those two accounts. Again, mortgage tax, we know we're getting new homes, new construction going on, so we estimate around $1,500,000 for 2016 and 17. State aid remains pretty consistent at $350,000. The local revenues are slightly higher than they were for 2015 due to new building permits. Again, sales tax, which represents 18 percent of our total revenues, we estimated the same figures for 2015, $2,800,000 and $2,800,000 for 2017. As a result, in order to balance our budget for 2016 and 2017, we'll appropriate from unfunded surplus $200,000 to balance the budgets. When we take a look at our analysis of our fund balance, when we add our revenues in 2014, $15,613,000 minus approximately $16 million in appropriations costs. And then we transferred $700,000 to both the highway department and the general reserve fund. Brings our total fund balance down to about $3,666,000. And for 2015, we'll be using $209,600 of our fund balance. And for 2016, $200,000. And for 2017, $200,000. And at the end of 2017, we'll be at $3,56,911. This represents about 19 percent of our total appropriations. And Mooney investors have recommended that we maintain at least the 15 to 20 percent of our total appropriations in order for us to maintain our AA2 rating with Mooney investors. We anticipate borrowing money in 2015 for $2,400,000 for a serial bond for the sewer project. And by having this type of fund balance will allow us to maintain that AA2 rating and that'll be less interest that we have to pay to the residents of Penfield for that sewer project.
So, Mr. Beeden, if I could interrupt at this point. Recently, as recent as last Thursday, you had an opportunity to spend some time with Mooney's Investor Services to talk about our bonds that we have, not only coming due but also projected for the Parkview White Village Sewer Program. And can you give us an update as to how that fit into this conversation?
Yes. We are doing some refinancing for the land acquisition project this year, which will allow us to take advantage of the low interest rates. And Mooney had to call us for a bond rating. And so we had to go through the last four years and they had to look at our future for 2015, 16 and 17. As a result, they came back and said that the town has a very positive financial rating, very positive outlook, very good financial management by the town of Penfield. And they were able to maintain our AA2 rating. So that will allow us, when we have to bid out those refinancing bonds, will allow us to have low interest rates for that. So that was very positive for the town.
Thank you. And thank you for your effort.
Thank you. We have two major reserve funds, the general reserve fund and the highway capital reserve funds. The general fund, reserve fund, we use for major repairs to our buildings. And we also use it for replacement for parks equipment and some of our staff vehicles. And in 2015, we anticipate having about $726,000 in this account. Now, as we go through 2015, if the decisions are made to do vehicles for the parks department or add some of the town staff vehicles, then we will amend the budget and the monies will come from this account. In the highway department, we transferred $500,000 from the general fund to build up the reserve fund because they do need major pieces of equipment. It's not just like a $30,000 item. It's close to $250,000 and $300,000 if you talk to Ronnie Williams. And in 2015, we put in approximately $500,000 for the needs for the highway department vehicle replacement schedule. And out of this fund, we will be able to use $256,000 to transfer that into the highway fund to offset the tax costs for that for 2015. So the balance at the end of 2015 will be $412,000. And again, if there's some additional equipment needs that they need, they'll be able to take the monies out of here to fund that. Now, we're talking now about our 2015 special district preliminary budgets. The 2015 drainage rate is $3.83 per unit or $38.30 per homeowner. This is an increase of $1.20 from 2014. The 2015 budget includes payment for debt service for the Tamas Cove and Consolidated Water Districts. The 2015 budget will be less than a penny per thousand or an average charge of 47 cents per average homeowner in the townwide Consolidated Water District. The Tamas Cove Water District will pay $1.53 per thousand or $244.64 per homeowner. This is an increase from 2014 of $32.96. The 2015 budget for the townwide lighting district is 6 cents per thousand or $9.44 per average homeowner, which is less than 2014 by $1.12. The 2015 tax levy for the intensified lighting district is $27.96. This is a decrease of $1.80 per homeowner from 2014. The 2015 unit charge for sewer operation and maintenance is anticipated at $41.44 per residential home, which is an increase of $1.65 from the 2014 tax levy. The 2015 unit charge for sewer debt service is $66.27. This is a decrease of $1.88 from the 2014 tax levy. The 2015 budget for the ambulance district number one, which is a Penfield volunteer ambulance, is 2 cents per thousand. The average home will pay $3.63. The 2015 budget for district number two, which is the northeast quadrant, is a penny per thousand. The average home will pay $2.08 during 2015. This is an 86 cents decrease from 2014. Two weeks ago, the supervisor presented the 2015 tentative budget. From September 4th through October 10th, there's still a public comment period going on. Tonight, we presented to you the public hearing on the 2015 preliminary budget. Two weeks from now, the town board anticipates approving the final 2015 budget. As they've had for, as far, as long as I've been here, they've always approved the budget before the election process. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Beeden. So keep your clicker in hand and get a little drink of water. And then I would open it up to questions for the town board. Then we'll open it up to questions from the audience. So, Board, any specific questions for Mr. Beeden? Bob, you did such a great job. Looks like you've stunned everyone.
You got anything? Yeah. Okay. Go ahead. Bob, just real quickly, just a couple of quick questions if I can. You talked a little bit earlier about state aid decrease. Is there a particular reason why the town or towns is getting less state aid than what we've received in the past?
Well, we actually got more state aid this year from the Consolidated Highway Improvement Program. That was an additional $21,000. When we look into the future, we know that this is only like a one-time thing. We're not sure that it's going to happen again. So we take a conservative approach when we put in those figures because they're really not firm until we actually get the notice from the state.
So the increase was in the Consolidated Highway Program?
Yes.
That's the CHIPS program?
Right.
For the state of New York?
Right.
That goes to our highway department for?
For the road repair work.
Okay.
So the other state aid that we get either remained, the other components of that state aid either remained flat or were decreased in some areas?
Yes.
So we had a one-time hit for roads and bridges under the Consolidated?
And we hope to get that again next year.
Earlier, you know, one of the fascinating parts of the budget process for me is the breakdown of the actual property tax for Penfield residents. And I know on one of your slides, and I, you know, when I looked and read it online, it breaks down the school district to the county, to the town. And I think it's just important to point out that, you know, when you look at that, whether it's residents that live in the Webster School District or what I kind of consider the northern portion of Penfield, or the Penfield School District, this body, this town board only controls a small percentage of your total property taxes. You know, when you look at the town of Penfield, 92.7 percent of your total property taxes, this town board does not control. And when you look at the Webster portion of the town of Penfield, it's just over 91 percent of your total property taxes, this town board does not control. You know, so other entities, that's the school boards, the Penfield School Board or the Webster School Board, controls the lion's share of your total property tax bill. And then Monroe County controls the remainder of your tax bill. And so I just, I've always found that interesting since I've been on this town board and talking to residents. Because there is, you know, to be honest, there is some confusion over your total property tax bill and where it goes and what you're paying for. Unfortunately, many of the residents who come into the town hall here and talk with Amy and her team to pay their school property tax bills don't realize that that school property tax bill, this board doesn't control. The school district controls that. So I think it's just important that we clarify that. I know, you know, when I've spoken to residents, I know the supervisor has spoken to a lot of residents and I'm sure everybody on this town board has, that we just kind of point that out and make sure everybody understands apples to apples and oranges to oranges. So I appreciate every effort that you do, Bob, in going through this very extensive budget. And I'm not convinced many other towns do this type of a process only for less than, you know, or 7.3 percent and 8.4 percent of your total property tax bill. So thank you for doing that. Just a couple of questions if I can. I noticed in the budget, there was a decrease in the town justice budget of somewhere around $29,000. Can you just explain what that entails?
Yes. That is, we had two employees that retired and we filled those two positions at the minimum salary range. So that's where the reduction is.
Okay. So it's, I'm sorry, it's retirements and then new staff coming in at lower salaries?
At less salary.
Okay. Thank you. I noticed also roughly $10,000 was budgeted for municipal parking. I'm assuming that that $10,000 is for the parking lots, the three parking lots over in the Four Corners area of Penfield? Am I correct on that? Or is it just throughout the entire town?
No. I think that one is done this year. We have to negotiate with them on that.
Okay.
So that was, that was an agreement that the town of Penfield had with the Penfield Fire District?
Right.
For the, for the lot on the north quadrant, northeast quadrant of the Four Corners. And as Mr. Beeden indicated, I think the last payment was made last month, September.
Yes.
And that's currently being reviewed and negotiated to a more favorable price for the town.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Then, following up with that particular question, then is there monies in the town budget for the maintenance of our public parking lots in the Four Corners area?
Yes. In the contingency account, if we have to transfer from that account.
So if repairs are needed or whatever is needed in those parking lots for safety and efficient flow of vehicles, you're confident that the money is available to address those particular situations as they arise?
Working with the supervisor on that, I'm sure that he will be able to find a resolution to it.
Okay. I also noticed $50,000 was designated towards sidewalk repair and expansion?
Yes.
So is that the same level that it was last year?
Yes.
Okay. I know our town engineer, Jeff Benway, spends a lot of time working on that, also with Mark Valentine, making sure that we keep our sidewalks as safe as possible, crack repairs, you know, damage for whatever reason, and also sidewalk expansion. So I think that's important that we continue to fund those type of projects. It looks like there's also additional funding designated in 2015 for Veterans Memorial Park, somewhere close to $50,000.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
That's for the playgrounds that are going to be placed, new playground equipment?
Okay.
That's badly needed in that area.
So that will be done in conjunction with our recreation department for services for youth?
No, that'll be done with the highway department.
Okay.
Done by the highway, DPW, and supporting the recreation programs. I guess is probably the best way to put that.
Yeah.
And then a large amount of the funding in our budget, I mean, all the different departments have significant dollars involved. But I really want to make sure that our youth programs and recreation programs are properly funded. I know Mr. Bylow is not here right now, but I know he, when I spoke to him earlier, he was planning on attending. And I just wanted to make sure that, in your opinion, your conversations with the supervisor and Mr. Bylow, that those programs are sufficiently funded moving into 2015?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you said that because I got the same response from Mr. Bylow when I did talk to him about that. And I just would like to point out, if I can, that so far in 2014, it's looking like our recreation department will have offered over 1,000 programs to Penfield residents. Programs to Penfield residents for our seniors, for our youth and for our adults. When we look at those, I believe there's somewhere in the range of 9,000 total persons enrolled in those programs. So I think that that, and that doesn't include the fall, I believe, if I remember the conversation with Mr. Bylow correctly. So that number probably will be closer to 10,000 people enrolled in those programs. Just kind of a quirky statistic here, you know, over 900 baseball games were played at the Little League Park in 2014. 900. That's a lot of baseball games. And it really highlights the wonderful partnership that we have with Penfield Little League, the town of Penfield Little League partners on those fields for maintenance and handling all the needed facility upgrades that go on there. So we've got a wonderful partnership with the Little League organization. They're a great group of volunteers and I know that partnership will continue on in the future. 250 soccer games were played on Penfield Field. Two hundred and fifty soccer games were played on Penfield fields, fields that are maintained by our Penfield employees. And so, I think that's something that we should all be proud of. PCTV, it's very important to this town board that we fund Penfield Community Television and, and keep us going on promoting what's going on in the town, allowing residents access to information, whether it's online documents, or what the planning board's doing, or what the zoning board's doing, or particular projects. Supervisor puts out announcements of things going out in the town, also allows us to let residents know if there's any emergencies going on throughout the town. It's a great form of communication. And, and so I just want to check with you to make sure that we do have proper funding, in your opinion, to maintain that level of service through Penfield Community Television to the town residents.
Yes, we do.
Okay. And I know-
I would just, and I would just like to add that, you know, certainly, that's an area that is heavy with equipment. And the ongoing effort that, and I'll thank Dave Renner and his staff, for us looking for, um, alternate and creative ways to make sure that we still keep the screens lit, but also recognizing that, that's a, that's a balance for us to make sure that, you know, we, we stay somewhat ahead of that curve. So, we, we continue to work on that. That's an area that we'll be spending more time on in 2015 with the board, just making sure that we get that right balance overall.
Thank you. I also noticed, in reading the budget, one of the more popular events here in Penfield's Fourth of July celebration, it looks like we've got the 2015 celebration fully funded. I noticed $12,000 for fireworks. Is that-
Yes.
Is that the same amount that we had last year, or is that more or less?
About the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we're, I think we're up just a little.
Ten thousand, from ten to twelve.
I think, I think we're ten to twelve.
Yeah.
In the amphitheater series, the, the concert series that we have in the summer, we have three different concerts, um, throughout the week for, I think, about a four to five-week block of time in the middle of summer. And so, moving into 2015, I hope that that's fully funded to the extent that we can maintain those type of concerts like we have in the past.
Yes.
Would that be a correct statement?
Yes, that's correct.
Our librarian, Bunny Brinkman, is here today, and thank you for coming. I appreciate you taking your time tonight. I know that she puts together her town budget, and I would like to thank you, Bunny, for your team's efforts in, uh, working with the town to put together a, a good budget to keep the, the library up and running for all of our, you know, residents to use, and even residents that I know that aren't Penfield residents come and use it. Just want to make sure that we have proper funding in place for the library, its staff, and its programs moving into 2015.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. A, a, a project that we've spoken about for a couple of years now, and I know there's been some questions with, or some hiccups with funding of the project, but it looks like moving into 2015, Motts Lane will be completed. Is that, Mr. Supervisor, is that correct? Are we moving in that direction?
There's three individuals in the audience that represent engineering and public works that assure me that by November one, uh, we will have that completed and, uh, and paid for within this, uh, this current construction season.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll save them to speak, um, and we'll, we'll make sure that that continues to stay fast on the agenda.
Great. Well, we, we certainly appreciate that from the town board perspective. I know that the Motts Lane is very important to the businesses over there in the, in the Four Corners area. It's also a safety function of the Four Corners that I think will be not only well-received by residents and patrons of businesses, certainly the patron owners of those businesses, but also from our public safety providers. For, as we know, Four Corners can be a difficult intersection at times, and Motts Lane certainly will help in that corridor. And so, you know, to the supervisor and the, and the Penfield staff, you know, this town board member, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of them, but I'm sure they will join me in thanking everybody for making sure that that project gets done. I was not expecting it to be done this quickly. I thought it was going to be done in 2015, so I'm glad to hear that it's a priority with our staff. And, and I know that the business there is, and businesses in that corner, and that, that our commitment to economic development, economic vitality will certainly benefit once that road is operational.
I, I think Mr. Costello and I would say that we thought it might be done in 2013. So, uh, with a little, with a little assistance from the Penfield Business Association helping us secure some property and, uh, you know, getting restarted with some funding that, that we had from the federal government, I think we're at least back on track.
Great. And this question's probably directed towards the supervisor, but I know in the past, you've briefed this board, I'm at town board meetings, about the healthcare consortium that you're involved in with other towns and municipalities. Can you just elaborate a little bit more on where we stand with that and some of the benefits of the town participating in that consortium?
Okay. Uh, we started the consortium with approximately nine entities, towns, villages, and Rochester Housing Authority. As of right now, we're at fifteen. We will have our sixteenth coming in on the first of 2015. That has given us the opportunity, certainly as a community or as a consortium, to, to help leverage between MVP and Exelis to ensure that we get the, the best pricing. We currently are with MVP. We will be with MVP through 2015. However, in 2015, we'll be going back out for bid, just to make sure that everybody's pencils stay sharp. And so, we'll be going out for quotes both to MVP and Exelis. For this year, um, we are looking to, to come in at about 12%. That's all up and in, so that includes all of the Affordable Healthcare, or what's known as Obamacare, costs that are tagged on to run that program, as well as the increases. So, um, the good news is that we're at a 12%. The bad news is we're at a 12% because healthcare costs continue to escalate. We know that some of our counterparts are looking at anywhere from eighteen to thirty percent increases this year. We have one community, I won't mention the community, that has wanted to get involved in our consortium, and we have elected not to bring them in at this time because their rating is lower than what our rating is. And so, we want to make sure that they're, anyone that's coming into consortium as a rating that's equal to ours or better, because that helps with our overall rates. So, that's our ongoing goal. And then our ongoing goal certainly is, you know, managing our costs, being able to, to obtain information. So, the town of Penfield, with 117 full-time employees, asking MVP or Exelis for information is a lot different than we reach out for approximately 3,000 headcount. You tend to get quicker phone calls and quicker response time. That was the other component. And then the third component, demographically, if we take a look at towns, villages, and the cit, two cities that are represented within the consortium, everyone, you know, is at a forty-eight and a half to forty-nine and above. That's our average age. And so, demographically, the thing we want to work on is wellness, so that we can prevent some things, or help some of our employees recognize in the early stages, high blood pressure, diabetes, those types of things that may in fact take them away from work and cost, uh, cost us more for the consortium. So, uh, so far, we've been able to help manage our costs very well, and so far, very pleased with how that's worked for the last four years.
Okay. Thank you. No, no further questions?
Yeah, I would just like to offer up and, and confirm or clarify, Bob, with respect to, um, you have the tax rates up there. Certainly, we've, we're very knowledgeable of the notion or the, the mandate of the tax cap that has come from Albany. And it has been a challenge, not only for our municipality and school districts, but for other municipalities and our colleagues across the county and the state to comply with that tax cap requirement. Certainly, this proposed budget clearly complies well within that tax cap, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Even with a decrease in state funding.
Yes.
And I think that it's also important to note that when Albany has decreased our state funding, either through the majority of the state legislature or our governor, they are still mandating a tax cap, and also continue, as Supervisor mentioned, in terms of health benefits, continue the list of unfunded mandates that come through to our town. And certainly, I commend the budget heads who have to start off with, department heads who have to start off your budgets with those mandated costs and, and work from there. I have experience in the county of Monroe as well with the, the high cost of Medicaid, and how far more than a majority of the county budget is for Medicaid alone. And that is, again, another unfunded mandate. So, I think it's certainly commendable that not only do we have, are we staying within the tax cap, there is no increase in the tax rate. We're able to do that when Albany is saying, "Have a tax cap rate, pay all these unfunded mandates, we're not going to help you with, and by the way, we're going to decrease your funding." So, I think it's very commendable, uh, through the process, we've been able to do that. Do you have a sense, Bob, as to our neighbors wrestling with the same challenges, how they have come out with their proposed budgets and, and tax rates?
Yes, I, I give an analysis of all the nineteen towns. There's seven towns that are-
Excuse me, Bob. If you'd just pop your mic on.
Yes. Can you hear me now? Yes.
All right.
Um, I've, I've, I've called nineteen towns, and out of the nineteen towns, there's seven towns that have having a tax increase.
That they're-
Trying to be below the tax gap, but there's some that aren't. So, they have to go through a resolution to have, you know, the law changed for them for that year.
Which has a rip, which also has a ripple effect, you know, because there are, there are some rebates or some refunds that are due that start this fall. And so, as, as towns do not meet the tax cap, that has impact on either the checks or the credits in future years. And, um, you know, I know that many communities and residents in communities are interested in maintaining a level under the tax cap in order to get those tax credits or the tac, tax refund.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions or comments? Okay. So, I'll ask our clip, did anyone sign up to speak on the budget? And if you haven't, if you didn't, not a problem, because you'll have an opportunity. Is there anyone that did sign up to speak on the budget?
I do have someone, it does say, public hearing number one, so Robert and Elizabeth Sterrett.
Robert, if you please come to the podium, give us your name again for the, for the record, and then we'll try to answer any questions that, that you may have.
I'm Robert Sterrett, 480 Mans Lane. My wife, Elizabeth.
Good evening.
And we're, uh, we're here to talk about a drainage water problem on Mans Lane. Mans Lane was built-
And you'll, and you'll have this tied into the budget? Will you have this component tied into the budget? Because there is an opportunity for public participation. So, this is a, this is a hearing regarding the budget. So, if you have questions, thoughts, ideas regarding the budget, and if not, then I, I might ask to hold that for our public participation section.
Okay, I guess-
But if you believe, if you believe this is part of the budget, you know, we're certainly willing to, you know, to listen to that component.
Or if you have a question as to whether something is part of the budget?
I guess it depends.
If you have a question as to whether something is part of a budget?
Well, we, we certainly have a concern that, that will impact the budget eventually, I'm sure.
Okay.
Whether you want us to talk now or later, uh-
It sounds, it sounds like, it sounds like this is more of a, of a question. So, if I, if I recall correctly, we exchanged an email note. You had a question regarding some drainage on Mans Lane.
Yes.
Would like the town to have some assistance in that. I know that Jeff Benway and some members of DPW have been out to at least do some initial review of that. So, I think it's more of a, of a drainage-related issue in the neighborhood versus, you know, specifically the hearing on the budget. So, I might, I might ask that we get, get to that at public participation. So-
Good.
If, uh, it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit, but I think that's the more appropriate place for that.
All right.
Okay?
Thanks.
So, please, please get comfortable, and we'll, we'll continue to, to move, to move the, the, the agenda on. So, uh, is there anyone else that signed up to specifically address questions on the budget?
I, I think the others are for regular public participation.
Great. Thank you very much. Then I would open it up to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on the budget? Mr. Murphy? And it's an opportunity to certainly ask questions, clarifications on the, on the current budget that's being proposed and, and what we're hearing this evening.
Good evening, Town Board. Mr. Supervisor, Mr. Beaton, department heads. I'm Tim Murphy. I live at 48 Corral Drive. And first, just wanted to acknowledge, you know, being, uh, being in corporate America and going through this exact same process right now, I know it's thankless, but thank you, because it is difficult. There's lots of meetings, lots of decisions, lots of spreadsheets that have to go back and forth to get to those meaningful numbers. So, very much appreciated. But, Mr. Supervisor, I've got a specific question. I, I submitted a list of questions last week, and I see Mr. Beaton pretty regularly, and I've been warning him that they were coming, and then, then I started asking him, "When am I going to get answers?" And he said, "Well, wait till tonight." So, Mr. Supervisor, again, I think these are questions that have some detail to them. What's the proper approach to answer them? There's a few of them I feel strongly like to call out, but how would you like to-
If you, if you want to go through those, I mean, that's the purpose of the public hearing. I, you know, certainly, we've, we've offered, and I've offered a number of times, that either Mr. Beeden, myself, or both of us, to sit with any resident of the town to, to go through, because some, some residents have some very specific to, to their interest. But if you've got some items that you believe that are, are items that you want to get out on the table this evening, um, we're here as part of the public hearing process.
Well, how about if I do a subset? I've circled a couple of them, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay.
But, but I also like to make a suggestion, too. I mean, talking to Mr. Beaton, he said he got quite a few questions, which kind of led me to, well, how would I handle that? And I was thinking, well, maybe if you could put an FQ&amp;A together, and maybe put it on the website, so you could sum up all the questions.
And actually, Mr. Beeden and I spoke about that the other day, that as we get these, others may have the same questions. So, if we do a frequently asked question or a, or a Q&amp;A section and attach it to the, to the budget, where the budget is being posted, uh, that's where we'll look to do that. So, we'll, we'll look to have that up by end of this week.
Thank you. Good idea.
Absolutely.
And also, I, I wanted to acknowledge something we talked about last year that's in this year's budget, looking at it, was the year-to-date spend numbers.
Mm-hmm.
But how about this for a challenge for next year? How about a forecast for the rest of the year, like a nine and three? You know, we're nine months into a twelve-month year, and maybe a look forward of, you know, what the spending is for the, the balance of the year.
Okay.
So-
I mean, we do that, we do that internally.
Okay.
Bob and I, at our regular, at our regular updates, we talk about that. I also touch bases with our department heads on that item as well, because the worst thing that can happen is that we have a surprise at the end of the year, and we want to know about those surprises. So, tomorrow will be our monthly meeting that, that we have with the department heads, that I have with the department heads. And one of the questions that, or one of the agenda items is to talk about current budget, and then to talk about, is there anything out there that's going to surprise any of us? And the earlier we know that and can react to that, obviously, the better off it is, you know, for the, you know, for the budget on a whole.
Great. So, we're on the same page.
Yep.
Thank you. So, so, again, let me put my glasses on here, and a few things that were apparent to me when I looked at the budget, you know, was looking at personnel costs. I mean, it's 6.5 million dollars, the lion's share of the budget. And one of the things that I noticed through the, the different departments, there, there were a lot of ins and outs. So, there, it looks like there's a pretty significant net change next year in, in staffing in different departments. Now, you said there's 117 employees. Certainly, there isn't 117 moves.
Right.
But something like a staffing plan that should, say, this year, next year, you know, FTEs, you know, where the spend is, you know, where the ups and where the downs are? I mean, that would clarify this whole process, I think.
Okay.
So, again, I, I counted 11 different moves, and again, we talked about a few of them.
Right.
But again, to, to put that front and center, I think, would be a good process improvement.
Okay.
Another thing was the pay increases. Another thing was the pay increases. I mean, that's a very sensitive topic, and, you know, I did a little bit of research and, you know, I kind of looked at the different line items, the different job positions. And I'm assuming there's a benchmark, and I'm assuming it's something like the Consumer Price Index, and, you know, whether it be regional or national, hopefully it's a, you know, one of the current numbers. But maybe if you could enlighten me a little bit, where does that come from and how can you explain? There's 1.5%, it seems, for a number of employees, 0% for, for many, and there's a 5% or 6% increase for, for others.
Sure, absolutely. So, so what happens is, is that certainly, you know, CPI for Northeast is something that, that we take a look at. However, when I came into office, one of the things that I said is, is that, you know, we may not, we may not always, and from time to time, we may have to veer off from that just based on economic times and economic conditions. And as you mentioned, if you take a look, across the board, you know, you will see some folks that receive no increase. So all the elected officials and all of the appointed officials for the last five years have not received any increases. We also have, we had a year where department heads did not receive increases. We had one year where no one received an increase, and we had a year where the department heads did not receive. Last year, it was 1.5% across the board, with the exception of elected officials and appointed officials. Now, what you also have to take into account is, is that there, there is steps within our process. And if you're eligible for a step increase, then you will get something more than your 1.5. So 1.5 was given to all of our employees for 2014. And then those employees, typically employees that are new to a job, new to the town, new to a job, they got promoted, fall into a category of step increases. So if they meet on their performance appraisal, other requirements to advance a step, then in fact, they will, they will see an increase. And so that's where you may see in some cases where someone got a 1.5, which, you know, was the uplift of, of our wage scales, and then another couple percent or 2.5% could be associated with a step increase for the job that they're doing, and an increase that they went from satisfactory to above average.
So, Mr. Supervisor, what I think I'm hearing, it's all good information...
I would hope it would be good information.
Government's adopting some pay-for-performance policies as well. So no longer is there an across-the-board increase, you have to earn your increases with consideration of where you are in your job and your midpoint and the, and the payroll scale for that job.
Right, that is correct. That has been in place, that has been in place for many years. In fact, Penfield was one of the first communities to put that in place under the, under the guidance of Rose Iscone, who is our HR Director, certainly working with the Town Board at the time. And I was a member of the Town Board at the time. And we brought in a, we brought in a cross-section of private and public entities that worked with us to put that in place. So our salary scales could be increased or uplifted a percentage. And then again, if in fact an employee meets all the requirements of their job and is able to move from satisfactory to above average, they get recognized for that, and that is part of that pay-for-performance.
So final question, Mr. Supervisor.
Sure.
Is there community input at all to this? Is there benchmarking? How, how is that approach? Is there a payroll and compensation board? You know, who looks at this? Maybe it's outside the preview of you folks.
So, so what happens is, on an annual basis, all of the communities across Monroe County, we put together a benchmarking chart that, that we have and we utilize, and that's a component that goes into that. And then also, working very closely with our HR Director and the HR folks across the county, is another component of that. It's been some number of years that, that we've overhauled, because what we had in place was, you know, refreshed a number of years ago. But we have not, we have not gone back and done a wholesale overhaul of that since we put it in place.
Okay. Okay, so to, again, to finish the topic, just my general observation and request is you consider a staffing plan that, again, looks at, you know, what the net changes are year over year. I think that would, you know, reflect well on, you know, where we are and where we plan to go.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
Yep.
The next thing was, we've talked about the, the capital equipment purchases for next year, the highway department, the trucks and the like. And I mean, maybe my first question is, is there a documented schedule for replacement?
The Director of Public Works, at, at one time, we had multiple schedules when parks, sewer, highway facilities were all separate. We pulled those together, that falls under the, under the umbrella of our Director of Public Works. So we do, we do have a schedule so that we know, you know, the age of the equipment, and we also have a tenant plan for replacement. But as, as you know, from time to time, that, that will slip, again, based on available dollars and funding. Our snowplows, for instance, in a perfect world, every 12 to 15 years is, will look to change those out. We have a few pieces of equipment that have reached the 15-plus year, and we're looking to get those changed out. And, you know, so that's an ongoing discussion that, that we have. Two years ago, we spent quite a bit of money on a large excavator that, that we brought in. We upgraded our drott and a couple of other smaller pieces of equipment. And then this past year, we replaced a road tractor that probably should have been replaced a number of years prior. But again, it's a, it's a balancing act that, that we have, and this board has been conscious of trying to balance our equipment needs to do the work, and also not, you know, having significant increases to our taxpayer. So as we take a look at 2015, one of the things that we're looking to do is to replace our two oldest pieces of equipment in the highway department that, that we use for plowing snow. We do have some other pieces of equipment that, that we're currently analyzing. The Director of Public Works and I had a conversation as recent as today about a piece of equipment, and are we at a point of fixing it or sending it down the road? So those conversations go on on a regular basis, and we try to follow a schedule of replacement as best we can based on available funds.
Okay, good answer, Mr. Supervisor. Just kind of related to that, going through the budget, I saw a pretty significant increase in parts for vehicles.
Yes.
You know, 35%. You know, so pretty good upcharge, and I know I'm not aging out, but a lot of us are, and I'm assuming the equipment is. So again, keeping a keen eye on that, I'm sure, is a priority.
Yep, absolutely. And that's why, one reason why we're looking to change out a couple of those large vehicles. I mean, they're, they're our workhorse. I mean, if you think about it, we've got, we've got 19 of them, if I'm not mistaken, we've got 17 for our plow routes, we've got two reserves or spares. The two reserves and spares are probably, you know, at their, end of their useful life. But when we have a breakdown in the winter, folks are trying to get to school, trying to get to work, we want to make sure that we're able to put 17 trucks on the road. And we've got, we've got a couple that really have, we've pushed beyond their limit.
Okay. Thank you. And maybe this is a good segue, because one of the things that I was trying to get smarter about, and I didn't include in my questions, was, you know, everything about the fund balance. And Mr. Beaton answered some of the questions tonight.
Mm-hmm.
But some playback there, you know, it's $3.6 million. You know, the term fund balance, I think, is unfamiliar to a lot of people. Basically, it's the difference between assets and liabilities. You know, it's how much uncommitted cash we have.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I heard the number tonight, I did the math and it was 20%, but Mr. Beaton said it was 19%. And I know how that drives the cost of capital, but, I mean, in New York State, just doing a little bit of reading, it seems like 10% to 15% is more the norm. Any comment on that, where we are and why we take such a, you know, a positive position?
A more conservative, more conservative approach?
Definitely.
You know, part, part of it is, you know, as we take a look at our current credit rating, that, that has a, has an impact on that as we go out to, you know, potentially borrow funds for bonds, sewer projects, those types of things. You know, and then certainly, you know, and it, while it doesn't happen every year, when we had the ice storm, Penfield was one of the few towns, if not the only town, that didn't have to go out and borrow money for cleanup. There were many communities that had to go out and borrow money and waited as long as two-plus years to get refunded from FEMA. We were able to, to do that, weather that storm, we did get our funding back from FEMA, but we didn't have to go out and borrow. And when you go out and borrow for, for emergency purposes, that's where you really get beat up with things. So there, fund balance is always a, a subject that this Town Board takes and watches very closely, because our goal is to make sure that we have sufficient funds on hand to deal with emergencies, that we don't have too much of the taxpayers' dollars, because God forbid, we don't want anybody to think that the, the government knows what to do with people's money better than they do. We never want to be in that position. But we also want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and we're able to keep, you know, and maintain a relatively flat approach to our, to our taxes and our tax rate versus having a high one year and a low another year. So it's an ongoing balance that, like I say, this board takes very, very seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Good answer. I mean, that's kind of what I would have expected, but it is an overly conservative position.
Yep, and, and we've, Mr. Beaton and I have talked about that, and I think, you know, one reason why we're, you know, we beefed up our capital reserve for equipment, you know, if we, you know, if, every time you, you look to buy a new, fully-equipped snowplow, you're looking at somewhere between $250,000 and $275,000. Now, we use that for 12 to 15 years, but that's a pretty substantial, so, you know, we've got budgeted half a million dollars for two pieces of equipment, so that we can keep our, keep our fleet at least somewhat in, in reasonable shape.
So if you had to project forward to the end of next year, Mr. Supervisor, as a percentage of the total budget, $15 million, what kind of percent would you be looking to strive to? Back to the 20% for the fund balance?
I, I think historically, what this Town Board has looked at, I think, when I was on the Town Board, I think one of our lows was about 11%. We have, over the last, I'll speak for, since I've been in office, that we've attempted to maintain a 15 to, to 20% of overall balance.
Okay, thank you.
And that'll, and that'll float a little bit year to year. And as we, as we identify that, you know, keeping it, to me, keeping that below, below 20, I think, is critical. Keeping it at 15 or above is where I think is appropriate for the community.
Thank you. Couple of real, hopefully, quick answered questions.
Absolutely.
I noticed the cable TV equipment costs have decreased year over year, and, and it's almost nothing for next year. Is there an explanation?
The explanation is, just spring warning off my comment when Mr. Moore asked the question of Mr. Beaton, is that, you know, the board has reduced in that area. You know, originally, there was a fairly sizable amount. I think the board has asked myself and Mr. Renner to look at other alternatives to make sure that we continue to put a good product on the field, but do it in a way that's the most cost-sensitive overall. And so that's, that's our ongoing balance of making sure that transparency in government, people can tune in from their home and see it. But we also have to make sure that we're spending the right amount of money to do that. And Mr. Renner and I have met several times since the budget process, you know, looking for creative ways to, to make sure that we're addressing, you know, equipment needs or equipment that we might be concerned about failing. And then what is some of the other technology that's available out there? I mean, that's the other component of it. Technology is changing so quickly, we want to make sure that we don't invest $100,000 in something today that may in fact be short-lived in just a couple of years. So the balance that, or the, the request from the board is to make sure that we do it in a way that keeps us alive and the most cost-effective as we can. I won't tell you that's going to be easy, and Dave and I have had a number of lengthy conversations, but I'm confident that we'll, we'll figure out what that right balance is.
Good answer, thank you. Mr. Supervisor, I noticed a couple of line items, and I think this is good news, and maybe elaborate, retirement and social security costs, the line items on there, last year to this year, went down. Not a lot, but could you add some color to that, please?
Sure, absolutely. So as Mr. Beaton had indicated, you know, we have, we have been very judicious as to how we've replaced the folks that have, have retired. We've done a number of reorganizations over the last four or five years. So as folks have retired, we have not done a one-for-one replacement. And then as we bring new people in, they come in at a lower salary, they also come in at a lower, you know, you know, from a lower benefit standpoint. So for instance, tier one, tier two workers pay nothing for their retirement. Current tier six pays a percentage, and they'll pay a percentage for their entire working career. So there are a number of those components of not replacing one-for-one, and then replacing at lower salaries, lower rates is the reason that that, and if I recall my numbers correctly, we went from a 66% labor benefit rate for this year, next year we're projecting a 64%.
Burden rate for an employee?
That's right.
That's unbelievable when you benchmark it against corporate America, that's double.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. There were two things that we were pretty active about in conversation at the Town the past year, was about outsourcing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, snow plowing, and then the field mowing.
Yep.
I know it's not the end of the grass-cutting season, even though it feels like it's getting there. Will there be a report out on, you know, how many times, how much? I know we heard some issues from some of our friends and neighbors about stuff that did or didn't get done.
Right.
But will there be some kind of business case review of, you know, how we did there?
Yep, absolutely. Mr. Williams and I have talked about that month on month, as we've gotten together. The, the thing that, you know, that we looked at, if you recall correctly, as to what it was costing us putting our people in the seat. In some cases, we had, you know, folks that were making $24 to $27 an hour plus, plus benefits sitting on lawn mowers. They're, they're a lot more talented than that, and so we were looking to actually outsource some of that. So we expect to have the final numbers, Mr. Williams and I have talked about getting all of those bills in, and then probably in the November timeframe, early December, we're able to show the board, this is what it cost us when we were doing it, this is what it's costing with a piece that we outsourced. We didn't outsource the entire piece. We, we kept the athletic fields under the realm of the town. We outsourced a number of those areas that were non-athletic fields, ponds, or other common areas. And then in, in some cases, we actually made some adjustments to the, to the number of times that we cut as well. But we'll, we'll have a report for that, because what, what I owe the Town Board is that, and I also owe them a recommendation for next year as, as we move forward. But while I have you, and, and my ongoing effort to do benchmarking, the company that you work for, do they have proprietary lawn mowers?
Absolutely not, Mr. Supervisor.
And that's contracted out just based on, you know, probably overall costs?
Well, it's not core services, we make plastic laboratory equipment.
Got it. So, okay.
So, Mr. Supervisor, what, observation, again, I'm at Rothfuss Park very regularly, and I, I noticed some young people working, spreading mulch pretty regularly. Did we have some supplemental employees this year, some young people work for the town?
Yes.
Good.
Seasonal.
Seasonal.
Seasonal. We, we've, for as long as I can recall, we have brought seasonal workers in. We try to hire some number, high school students, college students, you know, to give them an opportunity. And in, in most cases, we're not 100% successful, but in most cases, we're able to hire young men and women that live within the town. And that's, that's our ultimate goal. That's something that our Director of, of HR looks at, because we want to try where we can to give those jobs to Penfield residents.
Great. We, we didn't do it the prior year, though, did we?
What's, what's that?
Seasonal employees.
Yes.
For the parks and, okay, okay.
We've had, we've had, we supplement, we supplement and have supplemented our workforce in parks. in parks. Occasionally, we have had folks in the highway side, but parks is our most consistent. Engineering, we'll bring someone in, an intern in as well.
And you did a great job preparing the Rothfuss Park for the Rothfuss family, and Terry's going away. It was amazing.
Thank you. That, Mr. Williams and his team.
Just to finish up on outsourcing, Mr. Supervisor, the snow season's coming. Is there going to be an initiative to look at, take a fresh look at that, outsourcing snowplowing?
This is what I'll say to you, Tim, is that there is currently, there is currently nothing on the table and before the town board. But I will also say, I would not be doing my job if I didn't push that envelope each and every day. And so whether it's grass-cutting, or plowing snow, or plowing parking lots, or other activities that we have, you know, fixing HVAC, sewer work, where we've got issues within our right-of-way and things like that, each and every day, and probably a week does not go by where I don't touch one of our department heads and ask them, can we do it better, cheaper? Because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, our prices continue to go up, our pension costs continue to go up, insurances continue to go up, healthcare continues to go up. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't bring to the town board alternative ways to look to reduce costs. So while there's nothing formally on the board, I don't want anybody to think that I'm not going to continue to look at it, because I would expect every resident in the town to say, what are you doing? I know what you did for me today, I know what you did for me last month, I know what you did for me last year. What are you doing for me tomorrow? And that'll be an ongoing effort. That's reality, that's business. And it's unusual for government, but it's needed and necessary in government. I think if we had more people, more leaders, you know, leading that way, government would be a lot less bloated, and a lot more effective.
Good answer, Mr. Supervisor, and I agree. Not to be critical, but as, you know, a concerned citizen and observer of the process last year, the process just needs to be improved, the business case needs to be shown, the math needs to be out there. You know, I think all of us could get comfortable if you show us how it all adds up, and how it works for us, as opposed to just trust us. So, thank you. So I can't leave you without two other things that are more suggestions. First of all, being on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for 12 years, you know, I had put this out there, and I still believe it, and, you know, when I saw the number, I just kind of chuckled a little bit, because I remember when we had to cut the parade, or the fireworks. And nobody wanted to do that, because it's so signature for the town. But the thing that I believed then, and I believe now, is, and this is maybe debatable by some, but the people that get most benefit are the political candidates. So what I'd like to suggest to you is, maybe ask the folks that participate, you know, as candidates, that support the cause, with a donation. And I'll leave it to your discretion, I made a suggestion in here, but, I mean, I think that'd be a nice idea for them to support the effort that gets them out in front of the voters.
Yeah. The other way to do it is, give all of the elected officials and the candidates an opportunity to sit with their families on the sideline and watch the parade.
I like the way you think, Mr. Supervisor. Thank you. And last thing, just an observation, and to beat this drum, you know, we talked about the school district, and, you know, how expensive, as a percentage, of our total tax bill. And I still believe the opportunities are out there, and I guess I just need to ask, last reminder, that, you know, I'd like to see joint meetings with the school board, to find places where maybe we have overlapping of services, whether it be security or back office, including human resources or finance. I mean, that's the creative element that I think government needs to take on, is to find ways to save money. You know, you've been very good at talking about where we're not placing heads, and trying to do the same with less. Well, where's the other opportunity? Again, you know, the school district. So I'd like to see that. I'm not aware that there's been any joint meetings this year, between the school board and the town board?
Not the school board and the town board. I mean, we have a number of department heads that meet regularly with their counterparts in the school district. Recreation is a big component of that, Chris Biello and his team, Ron Williams and the maintenance facility folks there. So we do a lot of interface. I had a very active schedule with our former superintendent, so that superintendent has changed out, not only in Penfield and Webster. And, you know, we have at least had some brief conversations with the Webster folks to say, you know, we want to pick that back up, and with the interim superintendent in Penfield, want to do the same thing. So there is an opportunity. I think we were making some good headway, but as the players change, then we start, we take a couple steps back to try to take a couple steps ahead.
Please keep the iron hot. It's an opportunity.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the platform.
Great. Thank you. Anytime. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this board on the budget? Okay. Board, one last opportunity. Any further questions on the budget at this time, for Mr. Beaton, or myself, or any of our great department heads? Okay, then, I will declare this public hearing officially closed. Just to recap, as Mr. Beaton indicated, from now until the 10th of October, there's an opportunity to provide input, feedback on the budget. Mr. Beaton and I have our action item to go through and do a Q and A online, and to have that up by the end of the week. And then, the next opportunity for discussion in a public setting with the board is two weeks from today, October 15th. Okay. Thank you very much. This public hearing is officially closed. Thank you to our department heads for attending.